I'd like to call to order the September 2nd, 2014 meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners and invite you to stand with me if you choose. I'll be offering prayer and then at the end of the prayer Commissioner Denny will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I want to comment about the community prayer gathering that several ministers in town had for us last week, headed by Brian Howard, Jason Pettis, Steve Ayers, Freddie Brown, Adam Schurz, and others, and if you would join me as we pray for the welfare of our city. From Jeremiah 29:7, "But seek the welfare of the city where I have sent you into exile and pray to the Lord on its behalf; for in its welfare you will find your welfare." God, we ask that you're as gracious to give us peace and pray that there'll be reconciliation where there may be in conflict and love where there has been hurt. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Denny?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here. If you would allow me, a point of personal privilege, we'll reorder the agenda tonight. I do want to do one thing before we start because we have some people watching the program tonight from Bowling Green, Ohio. Some of you may have heard that we had a friendly wager with the mayor of Bowling Green, Ohio, Dick Edwards, that whoever lost the weekend game with WKU had to wear the other team's jersey. And you'll notice I'm not wearing Bowling Green orange tonight.[114.03][114.03](APPLAUSE). And Chris has focused on two things over there. The shirt that he sent me to wear, it had Bowling Green Falcons, which obviously I'm not wearing, and the headlines from the paper, Battle of Bowling Green. And I think that score, what's that score again? Can you read that again? Fifty-nine, thirty-one, is that right? So, thank you from Bowling Green, Ohio, tuning in. So, let's see. We're going to do the public hearing in a few moments. Are there any other awards or recognitions?
I have none, ma'am.
All right. Do you have any other comments from the city manager?
I do not.
All right. Do the approval of minutes from the August 19th, 2014 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Any comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. We've got a room full of people tonight. Is anyone that has a public comment to make on an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll have, the first item that we're going to consider is actually item number three, Municipal Order 2014-174.
Municipal order approving the promotions of Ryan K. Johnson to the position of Crew Supervisor 2 and Kevin E. Meredith to the position of Crew Leader in the Public Works Department. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denny. Mr. DeFebbeau.
Thank you, Mayor. With the retirement of Michael Pillow, that put in motion a need to backfill a number of promotional positions. With us tonight is Jeff Lashley, Public Works Director, that put in before you his nominations for promotion. Jeff?
One of my great honors as Public Works Director is to get to make recommendations to you for promotions within the department. I work with a fine team of men and women, and the individuals recommended tonight for promotion are evident of that fact. With retirement of Mike Pillow, a chain of career advancements and promotions were made possible. I am pleased with these recommendations and wholeheartedly support the promotion of these fine men. The first employee as a crew leader has some big shoes to fill, and Mike Pillow was an excellent employee. He's a defendable and willing to go the extra mile for the citizens of Bowling Green. Mike will be missed. However, we have a capable employee in Ryan Johnson, who is ready, willing, and able to meet the demands of the new position. Ryan was employed by the city in 2000. His roles have increasingly progressed, given his willing to take on additional functions. Ryan is a Team Bowling Green graduate and has completed the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet's Road Scholar and Road Master Program. He has served on several committees, including our APWA Accreditation Committee, our Safety Committee, and our Employee Committee. Ryan has received training in numerous areas. He also serves as an internal trainer for the department and has filled in for a couple of positions as needed. Ryan was very willing to jump in and do that. Ryan has shown commitment to the department and the citizens of Bowling Green, also showing commitment to his community. Ryan is a huge WKU Hilltopper fan, and I have heard occasionally we'll decorate a snowplow at Christmas time. With Ryan's promotion, a vacant crew leader position is created. Kevin Meredith, or Stewie as many call him, is recommended for this vacancy. Kevin began employment in 2007 with the city and was most recently promoted in 2013 to OMT 3, Operations Maintenance Technician 3. As illustrated by the short time between those promotions, Ryan has shown great initiative in filling out his OMT job book, and that's where we document skills that the employees have gained. Kevin's an excellent equipment operator, shows good leadership, and Kevin is also a Team Bowling Green graduate. And if you get to talk to Kevin, you might ask him about his school bus drag racing at Beach Bend. Again, Kevin's promotion for Crew Leader is well deserved, and again, I recommend both of these wholeheartedly.
It's your turn, Ryan. You guys stand up so everybody can see who you are.[393.65][393.65](APPLAUSE). I missed, I missed the other.
He's behind the wheel.
Where's he at?
Stewie.
Oh, okay. He was hiding, Stewie.[408.03][408.03](APPLAUSE). I couldn't see you, that white-haired fellow behind you, that glow off his head was just blinding you there. Congratulations to both of you. I know Mike Pillow's been here 27 years, started as labor at the cemetery and then went to Public Works, promoted through the ranks, and even the Crew Supervisor 2 in 2005. And like you say, we'll know he'll be missed, but good job, fellas. Look forward to y'all taking over in that spot. Any other comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-175.
Municipal order approving the career path advancement of Anthony O. Phelps to the position of Operations Technician 3 and W. Derrick Sanders to the position of Operations Technician 2 in the Public Works Department. So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebbeau.
Thank you, Mayor. With the promotion of Ryan and Kevin, that sets in motion vacancies in their incumbent position. Jeff is again here to recommend individuals to assume those vacated positions. Jeff?
With Kevin Meredith's promotion, that has created a OMT, Operations Maintenance Technician 3, position. Tony Phelps is recommended for that position. Tony's been with the department since 2006. Tony, like Kevin, has shown great initiative in completing his job skills book, and he's an excellent equipment operator and a great person to work with. Tony also shows great leadership and serves as the Smith Driver System Safety Trainer for the department, and he also trains other departments as well. With our focus and priority on safety in the department, I often call on Tony Phelps to get up and give us a brief refresher on the Smith Driving System, and Tony's always very willing to do that and does a great job of it. With Tony's promotion, there's a vacancy in the Operations Maintenance Technician 2 slot. Derrick Sanders is recommended for that promotion. Derrick's been employed with the Department of Public Works since 2011. Derrick is very diligent in completing his skills book as well and has shown proficiency in many areas. Derrick provides many necessary tasks for the department. I believe these men will fill their new job functions very well, and I recommend these promotions.
All right. Your turn. Let's stand up and let everybody see who you are. There you go.[571.66][571.66](APPLAUSE). Congratulations to both of you, and we really appreciate the career path program that we have in the city that helps develop those skills and allows people to earn just a little more money for a little more skills that they bring to the table. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Now Municipal Order 2014-176.
Municipal order approving the promotions of Gregory R. Flora and Eric D. Scott to the position of Company Commander EMT and Bradley J. Akins and Mark E. Carver to the position of Fire Apparatus Operator EMT in the Fire Department. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill, and Mr. DeFebbeau.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure the commission has noticed that there's being, there's ongoing and generational change in our police and fire department as more senior officers are retiring and younger ones are taking their place and being promoted to leadership positions. Municipal Order Number 5 is one of those promotional leadership position. Todd Napier is here on behalf of Greg Johnson to put his recommendations for a number of promotions in the Fire Department. Todd?
Mayor, Commissioner? Thank you all for considering these four men for promotion tonight. They've all successfully passed the promotional procedures, promotional testing, and as well I've received written recommendations from their immediate supervisors and their shift commanders, so they come highly recommended. First off, we have Eric Scott. We're recommending Eric Scott for Company Commander. Eric's been on the department since 2005. He's promoted to FAO, or Driver, we call them FAOs, Fire Apparatus Operators, February 3rd, 2010. Eric's been engaged in his job in many ways. Some specifics are, he's on the Physical Fitness Committee, he's also one of our physical fitness trainers, he's in the Honor Guard, he's been on the Employee Committee, and this year he was also on the New Candidate Interview Board for 2014, so he's very active. He's served in many, many different ways. He's a real asset to the department. If you would, Eric, please stand. Eric Scott is our first recommendation for Company Commander. Second.[721.12][721.12](APPLAUSE). Second recommendation for Company Commander is Greg Flora. Again, Greg was hired in October 2005, was promoted to FAO in November of 2009. Both of these guys have been promoting and competing at about the same rate, so they're very, very familiar with each other. Greg has been very instrumental in our hazardous materials program out of Station 3, that's where he's stationed now. He's also one of the riders of our Electrical Emergencies Response Standard Operating Guidelines, which if you've been watching the news lately, it's coming out of Campbellsville, it's very important. We've been out in front of that, so Greg has helped us with that. Greg Flora, please stand. Remain standing if you would.[774.12][774.12](APPLAUSE). With these two promotions to Company Commander, that opens up two positions for Fire Apparatus Operator. The first recommendation we have for Fire Apparatus Operator, all these are suppression division personnel. Brad Akins, we recommend him to the position of FAO. Brad was hired in October 9th, 2006. He's been active since he's been with the department also, still very active. Some of the projects include committee for testing new fire hose. That's quite a task to undertake if you think about all the fire hose that we utilize. He's been on the Honor Guard since 2007 and presently the Honor Guard Commander, so he's the, he's really the guy who brings all that together when asked of him. Also, he's been on a very important PPE, or Turnout Committee, the personal protective equipment that we wear. Brad Akins, please stand.[831.18][831.18](APPLAUSE). Our second recommendation to fill the FAO position is firefighter Mark Carver. He was hired in October of 2008. Mark's been on the Uniform Committee and also a very integral part of Station 4 Specialty Program, which is basically WKU emergency response. We think WKU's a very important, very important emergency response area for us and something we focus on very heavily. Mark's been a big part into that. Mark, would you please stand? Mark Carver.[868.31][868.31](APPLAUSE). Any families would like to stand? We'd like for you all to stand also. No? No? That's fine, too.[881.37][881.37](LAUGHTER). Just to let you all know, and really to let these four young men know, is we'll be looking for some great leadership in the future from all you candidates, as Mr. DeFebbeau spoke about, so congratulations to all of you that recommend you. Sure as well.
Congratulations, Phil.
Thank you.
We've yet to finish the vote, though, right? Any other comments or questions? I'm sorry. Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Please excuse us, there'll be a mass exodus going out of here, and we're going to have a small ceremony at the base of the steps. Thank you.
And as they're leaving, we'll mention the other retirees that, from the Fire Department, Tracy Kenny, who was a Company Commander EMT after 23 years of service. To my knowledge, was the only police officer that ever left us and went to the Fire Department, to my knowledge, until tonight, anyway. Where's Jeremy? Where's Jeremy? Is he here somewhere? Okay. Yep. And then Matthew Martin, after 23 years of service. He started in 1991 and was a Company Commander, so we say goodbye to him. While we're going, I don't believe we have MB's replacement on here tonight, but we want to recognize MB Stoner as a Housing Recertification Specialist who retired after 17 years of service, so congratulations to her as well. Now Municipal Order 2014-177.
Municipal order approving the transfer of Jeremy W. Abel and the probationary appointments of Dylan A. Esely-Fredrickson, Chad D. Ennis, Esmer Farazovic, Christopher A. Johnson, Jeremy G. Maynard, and William T. Moore III to the position of firefighter in the Fire Department. So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbeau.
Tonight's a perfect example of that generational change that is occurring. It also reflects our attempt as a company to always be fully staffed, and in order to do so, we need to coordinate training time, not only in our Fire Department, but in our Police Department. For the Fire Department tonight, we have these applicants. Six are going to hopefully be appointed, and one, as the mayor mentioned, is a transfer from the Police Department. To be a fireman in this city, 254 people said, "Pick me." 107 passed a written test. Forty-one were interviewed, and from that distillation, 15 people are on eligibility list, in which these seven were part of that list. I believe all the candidates are here. Mike?
Two.
Two are not here. Mike, you want to ask the ones that are here to stand, please?
Rest of you guys, please stand.[1074.25][1074.25](LAUGHTER).[1075.25][1075.25](APPLAUSE).
Congratulations, gentlemen. It's quite undertaking to hear that bell ring and head out on the lights and siren and work on the next emergency that you run across. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. I'm looking at you, Jeremy. I'm shaking my head, looking at you. Municipal Order 2014-178.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointments of Randy J. Dos and Sean M. Perry to the position of Police Officer in the Police Department. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denny. Mr. DeFebbeau.
Those same changes that I mentioned earlier are also occurring in our Police Department. We're here tonight to approve two new applicants. They went through the windowing process of being selected, which included a written test, interview. One of those applicants is being, application's being filled because of the transfer to the Fire Department from the Police Department, and another of the persons who had the position chose to get out of police work. Again, we're faced with the challenge of getting our names to the Academy for Training, because we don't want to put untrained people on the street. I believe, Michael, both of them are here?
Yes.
Both candidates are here.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you for being here.[1167.08][1167.08](APPLAUSE). And I know we'll see you again when you get finished with the Academy. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. All right. Thank you for allowing me to clear out as many people from the room as we could there and come back to the, to the regular agenda for our public hearing. For the purpose of the public hearing is to obtain comments from citizens regarding the proposed 2014 property tax rates. Mr. Mizel. You want? Sorry. All right. It's time again for property taxes. We received the assessment from PVA just a couple of weeks ago, and we were required to have this public hearing tonight because of the rate we're proposing is between what we call a compensating rate and a 4% growth rate. We'll get to that in just a second. This is required per KRS 132. Won't bore you with that. But for the 2014 year, as you can see, we came in at about $4,168,565. That's a total growth of the 5.6% over last year, 2013. In dollars, it's about $222 million, close to $223. The way we have to do, though, what we have to do is we look at the makeup of that growth and we look at existing growth. And last year, we were at $3.9 billion in existing. This year's existing growth went to four, a little over $4 billion. It was about a 3.3% growth in existing property, or 130 million, 131 million. This is a little bit better than we've been getting the last couple of years. So I called Mr. Branstadter and talked to him, and about a third of this growth here is related to, if you recall, the facilities that were under EDA leases back last year in the fall. The EDA had to undo those leases and deed that property back to those facilities. There, I think there was two in the Trans Park and a couple, three or four, out in the South Industrial Park. So that really bumped up existing property, because it was already assessed, it just wasn't on the tax roll. I asked that question, why wasn't it new property? And he said it was already, it had been assessed, was just exempt because the EDA had owned it and had leased it out to those properties, or those owners. So 3.3% in existing growth, 2.3% in new property, and as you'll just drive around town, that new property is, you know, pretty much everywhere. Campbell Lane, both trans, or both industrial parks, a lot of good new commercial activity going on that led us to the new growth there. Here's the, kind of the reason we're here tonight is because last year we had 20.6 rate. That's what we're proposing to stay at for 2014, but when you calculate the compensating rate, it came in at 199, and the 4% growth rate came in at 20.8 cents. So the fact that we're right in between these two rates made us, or required us to give this public hearing, but we're proposing the 20.6 again. This rate would bring in the same amount of money. You're really kind of going backwards if you adopt this rate, and anytime our existing growth goes over 4%, we have to lower this rate. So we were at 3.3, so we were a lot closer than we've been in many years, so we'll have to keep an eye on that. This is kind of just a historical look. As you can see, in the years, existing hit over 4%. We had to lower the rate from 269 to 257 and so on. Those four years in a row, we had really good growth in existing, but since 2008, we've kept our rate at 20.6, and that's what we're proposing again for this year. The, I will mention, I put some 3, 5, and 10-year averages in your packets. Total growth, three-year average is 4%, five-year average is 3%, 10-year average is running at 5.5%. So we're on a good track. And then the most recent new and existing three-year average for existing was 1.9, and this year we came in at the 3.3. So we're on a good trend, allowing that natural growth to occur. Jeff, if I'm looking at that, the city has not raised its property tax in 11 years on your chart. Is that correct? That is true. I think 2003 was the last time. I think it was like 2.4, 26.4 maybe in 2002, if my memory's correct. So from 2002 to '03 was the last time we raised property taxes. Every year since, it's even gone, it's either gone down or stayed the same. That's a good point. Just a snapshot of what other people are doing this year. The Bowling Green Independent Schools are going to leave theirs alone, too, at 75.6. Warren County's going to stay there, really leave theirs at 21.7. I think Warren County Schools is going from 40.6 to 42.3, and we've gotten no news of the state changing theirs any, so. And just a couple reminders before I step down. Anybody owning property in the city, this is confusing, but you have city property bill and a county property bill, because the city still is in Warren County, so you will have both. Our taxes are due, like the counties, December 31st. This is the kicker here. People don't realize it, but January 1st is where, is when a 10% penalty kicks in if you don't get your, your payment in. We accept postmarks by the 31st of December. And then persons with theirs in mortgage escrow accounts, we still send them a bill. You'll just have to follow up, make sure, though, that your bill gets paid, even though it's an escrow, it's a good practice to do, to make sure your bill's paid. And then, of course, if you don't get a bill and you own property in the city, please call us. We do our best to find the most current mailing addresses, but we do have a few that are returned, and we do our best to try to find those, but it's still the taxpayers' responsibility to get that bill paid, so. Any questions? Comments or questions? Just to remind everybody that on the city's tax bill, we also include the Bowling Green Independent School District, but they don't, they're not responsible to us. We just are billing on their behalf. And thank the Independent School District and Warren Fiscal Court for not raising their property taxes this year along with us. Any other comments or questions? Please, there's no vote, is that's right? Let's see. I think next we're at the second reading of ordinance BG 2014-23.
Ordinance Resoning Real Estate. Ordinance Resoning Tracts of Land Containing 24.29 Acres From AG Agriculture and RE Residential Estate to PUD Planned Unit Development Located at 2101 and 2111 Morgantown Road Between Reflection Lane and Brewster Lane, Presently Owned by Stonehenge Corporation. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. This is the second reading. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Now, item eight, which is Municipal Order 2014-179.
Municipal order revising the promotional procedures for Police Chief and Fire Chief. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebbeau.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to defer to Michael Grubbs, who will provide an explanation for this. Michael?
Good evening. We have promotional procedures that are adopted by the City Commission that cover all of our promotional ranks for sworn positions in the Police and Fire Departments. Periodically, we bring before you changes to the promotional procedures for ranks below chief as we have issues come up or clarifications that are needed. We have separate procedures for Police Chief and Fire Chief that have not come before the board as often, but there are a couple of recommended changes that I outlined in a memo to you, along with a few just very minor changes. But the two significant changes are, one, to require that the Fire Chief have a bachelor's degree. That has not been required to this point. It's the only department head with the city where we do not require a bachelor's degree. However, we plan to phase this in so that it doesn't go into effect until 2018, to give any current We have separate procedures for Police Chief and Fire Chief that have not come before the Board as often, but there are a couple of recommended changes that I outlined in a memo to you, along with a few just very minor changes. But the two significant changes are, one, to require that the Fire Chief have a bachelor's degree. That has not been required to this point. It's the only department head with the city where we do not require a bachelor's degree. However, we plan to phase this in so that it doesn't go into effect until 2018, to give any current employees an opportunity to complete the requirements if they wish to compete for chief in the future. Chief Johnson plans to retire sometime in the next year or so, so this will not affect the next hiring of chief. Obviously, it's possible we might promote a chief that, or a candidate that has a degree, but this requirement will not go into effect until the next time that position comes open. So that gives candidates plenty of time to prepare for that. The second is that, as part of the process, the city manager is part of an assessment center oral interview that our testing company administers that includes board members, say, or chiefs from other locations. But the city manager would like to have the opportunity and the option to have a separate interview with candidate, the final candidate or candidates that may not be part of that process. That doesn't necessarily mean that the city manager will do this each time, but I felt it was better to have it in the procedures and therefore be allowed than to not refer to it and then run into a problem later, and the city manager want to do it and someone say, well, the procedures don't say he can't do it or can't do it. So this would provide the opportunity for the manager to do that and to have, say, someone else present, such as the HR Director, Assistant City Manager, or some other senior manager, simply as a witness. Those are the primary changes. I'd be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Comments or questions? No more 536 question in MPI test either, none of us.
No. Well, no, there is a, there is a different test that we use called a PAI, but it's not the MPI.
I just remember that one over and over.
Do you hate your mother?
Do you still hate your mother?
You still hate your mother, yeah.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-180.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of Jim Mohannon III to the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport Board.
So moved.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill. Mr. Mohannon served the Airport Board for several years and seems to be doing very well. Would like to continue if it's all right with everybody. Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-181.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-07 for de-icer and rock salt from North American Salt Company, a Compass Minerals Company of Overland Park, Kansas, in the amount of $168,506.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Mr. Phibbeau.
Just about the time that WKU's football team goes undefeated, bad weather will hit. And we're going to need about 2,000 tons of de-icer and salt. Last year's commission remembers it was problematic, because we had such severe weather across the country, and it was hard to get the amount of salt and de-icer we needed. We were lucky, we even were able to sell to some of our local partners who weren't as fortunate, have stocked up. We went out to bid this year for that amount, and we were not able to get a lot of competition nor complete de-icer at that level or surety of that amount of de-icer. So we decided to split the task and go with something de-icer and more regular salt. We felt this was a good compromise, but the problem is, either way we look at it, it's going to cost us more money. For example, last year, we spent about $94.91 a ton. This year, the lone bidder was 110, and we're told we should be happy to be able to get salt and de-icer for that price. Jeff is here, if you want to talk about the volatility involved in salt. But we're comfortable, we need this amount, and we have a good compromise. Kate has found the money, and we need to move forward.
Do you have any comments or questions for Mr. Phelps?
As much as I'd like to hear riveting presentation from him, I decline.
Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2014-25.
Ordinance Resoning Real Estate. Ordinance Resoning a tract of land containing 3.582 acres from RM2 Two Family Residential to OPC Office Professional Commercial located at 1706 Small House Road, presently owned by Eastside Church of Christ.
So moved.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Dunning.
Steve Hunter's here. If the commission has any questions about this rezoning.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Hunter?
I don't want to hear from, I don't think I want to hear from, I had to put you in there somehow, Steve. Yeah, you're welcome.
Hey, Billy, and he's a good man, too.
A good man, just don't want to hear from him.
Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-182.
Municipal Order authorizing the acceptance of grant from U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance for 2014 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Funds in the amount of $26,131.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. Phibbeau.
These JAG funds have to be split with Warren County. Our share is about $13,065. We intend to use these to buy approximately 2.5 cameras for our police officers. We'll make it work, but it's other people's money, and we need the cameras, so we recommend your approval.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2014-26.
Ordinance relating to property tax rates. Ordinance setting 2014 property tax rates, franchise tax rates, and improvement assessment rates and setting forth guidelines for payment, penalty, and interest.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams. We just had a public hearing about it. Are there any other comments or questions about keeping tax rates the same? Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to thank our city manager and staff for running a frugal city. Appreciate it. Because of Bureau's hard work, we're able to keep these tax rates the same. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-183.
Municipal Order Privatizing Streets, Sidewalks, and Drainage Facilities in Old Stone subdivision.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill. Mr. Phibbeau.
This is the mayor's sponsoring this, but we've been approached through the mayor and others for folks at Old Stone to want to privatize the streets, sidewalks, and facilities there, essentially creating a private enclave there and taking responsibilities for that. There is a protocol, and it might be appropriate for Gene to go over that protocol and to outline for you the action you'll be taking.
One question, does that include the bridge or just where the end of the bridge?
No, the entrance road up past the bridge, there's going to be a gate that they'll put up. The city will maintain that entrance road up to where the gate's going to be installed. But everything else past that gate, the homeowner association will be responsible for, including streets, sidewalks, all the drainage facilities, street signs, street lights, snow removal, cleaning. They'll assume liability for any issues involving those streets and sidewalks from this point forward. Since we constructed them or didn't construct them, but accepted them and have had within our control for a while, we agree if there's been any issues up until now, we're responsible for those, but liable for those. But anything on this point, the homeowner association will be doing all the maintenance, all the repair, all the new work, and be responsible for anything thereafter. And we have, we talked to the planning commission about this, Steve and Hampton. I think everybody is on board that this was the, an appropriate way to do this. The homeowner association supports this. The president of the homeowner association is here. I'm sure he'll be glad to answer any questions, along with their, I'm not sure I want to say unpaid attorney, but I think he lives there as well, too, so he got snookered into coming in and working on this issue, too. But I'm sure they'll be glad to answer any questions you've got. But the privatization, Joe, will start where they've installed their gate, so the city will still be responsible for the entrance road, including the bridge.
Can you explain to our citizens why we're still, does that road go anywhere else besides Old Stone?
My knowledge, no.
Okay. Explain to our citizens why we will still be responsible for that.
That's just what they requested. I'm sure I have a good answer for that. They just requested that their privatization begin at their gate.
Do you like to make some comments, Mr. Edlin?
So what we're going to have, once you go across the bridge, there's going to be a little section leading up to the gate that we're going to be responsible for?
We will still be responsible for all the entrance road from Scottsdale Road up until the gate that they put up. And I'm not sure I know exactly where the gate is going, maybe tell them, it's pretty much the entrance, main entrance to the subdivision.
That's correct.
This is Tim Edlin. I'm here on behalf of the Old Stone Community Association. I'm a member of that association, too. I live out there. We've decided that we would like to gate the community. We understand that we're taking over the responsibility for maintenance, which is a substantial responsibility, but we're going to allocate that among ourselves and assume that responsibility, assuming the responsibility that the city has now. So what we're proposing, and when I've consulted with Gene and Hampton Moore, the planning commission attorney, and Steve Hunter and others, is the best way to go about this is to seek a municipal order approving the privatization of the area in question. We provided Mr. Harmon, and it should be attached to the proposed municipal order, a copy of the plat. We've gone to the expense of having it surveyed, the entire area, through Jeff Arnold's firm, Arnold Consulting Engineers. And so we believe that this is the best way to go about that. And yes, while we're not asking to take responsibility for the bridge and the limited street leading up to that point, we are picking up the balance of the streets as you cross the bridge, so.
Do you know how many miles of roads that is, off the top of your head, Tim?
I walk it a lot. Six and a half miles.
Six and a half miles will go off of the city's maintenance responsibilities.
curb and gutter, and as lots are sold and people build homes, then sidewalks are put in, so much of that has sidewalks already.
How does this relate to our other gated communities in the city? Do they, are we still responsible for their entrances as well, before they get to the gate?
Yeah, unless somebody can correct me, this is a new one for us. Normally, this is done at the front end. I think most of the other gated communities that I'm aware of, they were always gated from the very beginning, and never were public and privatized by the city. The ones that I am aware of, what, Covington Grove, although that's a small entrance road, and I think they assume, I'm pretty sure they assume that one's no gate. Actually, the Cade Mill Road, I think it's Cade Mill Road. Kind of think there's any other gated communities actually in the city. That's about the only one I know of, or at least I could think of. But that's a short, very real short section. You know, this road, too, this entrance road, will still be used. Of course, it's still going to be used by fires, still be used by police, still be used by emergency services, you know, garbage pickup, everybody else needs to go back there. You know, I don't live there, so I'm not there very often, but I assume it'll still be used by visitors in the city going to the golf course. Like, you still have to go through that way to get to the golf course, so it will still have some public use to it. You'll still have to get past the gate at the end with that. But just when it came to us, we were asked, you know, I think it's from the beginning, that this is the area that we wish to privatize with the entrance road and still remain a public street.
Is there enough room? If I didn't know that it was a gated community and I turned across the bridge, is there enough room for me to turn around?
There are being arrangements. People smarter than me have designed all that, so there will be a turnaround if somebody pulls in there mistakenly or gets lost. There'll be a turnaround between the bridge and the gatehouse.
Great. I personally appreciate you all doing this. I really thought it would have been done a long time ago. Just concerned about that little stretch getting up to the gate, but thank you all for taking six and a half miles off the city books.
You're welcome.
Don't know if any others are willing to do the same thing, do you?
I'm not, I'm not enlisting volunteers, either.
The question of the bridge didn't get beyond staff. It's still an active source of discussion. There's two ways to look at it. One is, would it kill the affordability of their proposal? But bridges aren't cheap. The second is, as a public corporation, do we want to defer the responsibility and maintenance of a bridge to private citizens who may not take the same approach to maintaining that public asset as we would for our fire trucks and police and other things? And we thought it had some public conveyance. So it is a good question. You could re-ask it and deny this and ask them to include that, but it was muddled enough for us to just bring it here.
You have a comment or question? Yes, sir.
One, I like the project. I like, and not having a bridge is, as they said, is not a, not a big issue either. Is there any opposition?
I don't know of any.
With them, okay. We just want to cross that bridge.
We brought it up for a membership, and everybody that lives out there has to belong to the association according to the bylaws and the restrictive covenant, so we put it to a vote, and we agreed to do it.
Yeah, that's the most important thing to me, so I think it's a good project. I'm like, Joe, glad y'all doing it.
Well, police and fire.
They'll have keys and access codes to get inside.
I think that's the same way now in Covington, right? Where they have to press a button to get inside.
It's that way now in some of the apartment complexes. There's a specific code they punch in. Mr. Shelton has conferred with several companies when we got bids to put in the system, and they come highly recommended. They've done quite a few developments, and they have all those contingencies worked out.
I was just thinking of, you know, slowing them down, them having to be slowed by some structure or something, getting in, that's my only concern.
Well, it'd be my understanding, if there is one of those emergencies, that the people in transit are going to know the code in advance and probably be more than one vehicle getting there, so it's not like the fire engine would be stopped, plugging in a code,